Good evening. I will call to order the Shakopee Public Schools District of August 26th to work. So please call and roll.
Aldrich.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Peterson. Here. Tomzick. Here. Tucker. Here. And Barmen.
Yes, ma'am. Would you please join me by standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We're back to, we are Shakopee schools and having good news. And first, we're going to talk about state level competition in tennis. And we have our tennis coach here, Drew. You want to bring up your participant as well and talk a little about this great achievement.
Yeah, so this is Thrun and Tori, and his doubles partner Alex Courtgard started his first day of school at MS Human Cato today, so he could be with us. He wanted to FaceTime in, but we didn't know if he was on his past schedule or not. But this past June, Thrun and Alex made it to state as a doubles team out of Section 2AA. And they played at the State Boys Tennis Tournament on June 6th and 7th, right?
I think so.
Yeah. And they won one of their matches and made it to the second day, and only half of the state competitors get to do that. So it was really cool to watch them grow and watch Alex get to do that at senior as well. I still get Thrun for two more seasons, so.
Two more.
Two more.
Yeah, two more, yeah.
So we'll expect to see progress.
No pressure.
Well, congra-- let's give you a hand first. Got a certificate for you, Thrun. And you're taking it. You have a tennis family, right?
Yeah.
My son played with your brother.
Really?
Yeah. A few years-- oh, Shawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll look forward even to it.
Well, that's great. And for the results, of course, we have one for you too.
I actually played with Shawn.
Did you?
Yeah, I played with Shawn in summer tennis.
Okay. All work.
It is. Don't hold that against me, right?
We take that one, keep it down.
Yep, I will.
Do you guys slide a little? A little slide more. Nice photo. Underneath the desk, man.
Thanks for that.
That was your line. One, two, three. Perfect.
Great job.
Somebody's jumped up, boy. You want to jump up on there?
All right. All right, the next item. Jeff, you get to come forward. So I'm going to read what was provided for me. You can maybe provide a little color commentary on this, but this is what it says. So the Association of School Business Officials, is it kind of known as ASPO?
Yes, ASPO.
Okay. ASPO International has awarded Shakopee Public Schools District with the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This honor recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. Our school district earned the Certificate of Excellence for its comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended 2018, and we want to congratulate our entire finance department. Jeff gets to actually represent them tonight, but we know it's a lot of people that go into this and a lot of work.
Yeah, for sure.
We're very proud and appreciative of all the work you guys do and part of this accomplishment.
It certainly is the whole team, so. And I asked them to be here tonight.
It's a summary.
So, yeah, that's about, I think, the fairness in financial reporting, transparency, accuracy, so. And we'll, I think this is the third year that we've received this, and we'll submit the honor report this year as well, so, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Reggie's got your taken care of. Finally get my picture.
No, no. So, you got your choice. It's all the best, you have full make.
There we go.
Let's resume with consideration of the agenda as presented. Do we have any noted changes tonight that we're aware of? No? Okay. We'll look for a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Thank you, Jeff. Second, Joe. Call, second. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll move to consent. I guess it's fairly lengthy. I'm sure you can sit there and look at it, because we've got a lot of new hires, we've got a lot of the extracurricular assignments, that sort of thing, a couple of change orders, so any comments or discussion? Well, let me get it on the agenda or on the table first. I have a motion to consent. Thank you, Matt. Second, Angela. Any discussion on consent?
Well, I'd just like to pause and say thank you to Jeff.
Very good.
Probably I'll have some comments, but Jeff, thank you for coming and helping us. We are in a very different state now financially than we were a couple of years ago when Jeff joined us. Suzanne had done yeoman's work to get to the bottom of where we were, and Jeff's really taken it and revolutionized processes and brought a lot of integrity and credibility to our finance department, so I want to thank you for all of it.
People we missed. People we missed.
We're going to have him out of the building.
Yeah.
Ride him like a road.
Are we going to pull that so we vote against accepting it? We can vote against him.
We can climb his-- oh, that's interesting. What would you do in that case? No, thank you very much, Jeff. We certainly appreciate it, and you have made a significant difference, and we do value your continuing participation for the next few months, and then if there's ways that we can continue to use your expertise, we're certainly looking forward to that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Definitely, we always select shoes to fill.
All right. So with that comment, thank you, Matt.
I'm going to add one more comment.
Please.
For all the other names here, and some of them that we don't know at all, I know that they have given value to our school too, and I want to thank all of them as well. It's hard and important work that we do.
All right. With that, any further comments or discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting consent as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Let's move to, I think I flipped the page too soon. Item six. Jeff, you want to come on up? And we'll do a finance update.
Oh, we were.
Actually, we were. That's right.
Sorry, Jeff. If we could do eight dot three, that would be great.
As soon as I said, yeah.
I do have. I do have.
Ladies, you want to come on up now? Come on up now.
For sure.
So, for the benefit of those maybe watching this, it's 8.3 is through Prepare, prepared an acronym, update, and we're going to learn about, actually, we have a really nice article in the paper that talks a lot about this, but it's going to be nice to hear from you guys today.
So I'll kind of start, and then these guys will take over. And so, we've kind of named ourselves as the Crisis and Safety Steering Committee. This goes right here. And so, go ahead and introduce yourself, and I'll talk a little more, and then you guys can go.
I'm Gina Boots. I'm a special services supervisor. I'm a security, a school psychologist.
Ed's a medical needs advisor.
And I'm Dave Orlovsky, Assistant Superintendent. And we're the steering committee for this work that's happening right now. And the way we're organizing, yeah, this is new for Mike too.
We've never given ourselves that. Well, I wrote it out. It almost works.
So we'll have the four of us that kind of are doing some of the making sure we're holding ourselves accountable to getting this out in a way and to the right people, and so having more than just one perspective is really helpful. Some of the work that, if you saw the articles, Prepare framework really comes out of the Psychologists Association for Schools, and so Brenda is a school psychologist, and so she helps with that. Gina's in special services, and Ed being our facilities person helps give us a broader perspective. We will have a district committee as well that has at least one rep from each of our buildings, so we're sharing what's happening in each of the buildings and getting ideas and checking progress, learning from each other that way. And then each building will have a committee. So they'll have their work represented in a district committee, and then we have this steering committee that's sitting here. So the planning that went into doing that, Prepare training, we probably spent, I'll betcha, six months kind of getting ready for that, and Heidi Nissler was part of that before, and Gina has stepped in to fill her role when Heidi left. And so, they all play just a really critical and important role in making this happen, and are going to play a really important role for us going forward as well. So I'll let them talk about the day a little bit, and take any questions if I have.
Before you get going, and I know it was in that same paper, and sometimes we take it for granted, you had 115 members of our school staff show up on, and that was a Friday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday, August 15th, middle of summer, to work. And it was people from all different facets of our school district, and so that's just impressive in itself. And I think sometimes we take for granted that, oh, you just throw it out there and people show up. No, they did an unbelievable amount of work on the front end to, you know, we wanted a mix of people, different jobs, different things, and so, you know, even just seeing that and being there, that was impressive in addition to the training. So thank you. I applaud your efforts, just even getting it organized, so.
All right. I know he went through, Dave went through a little bit of this, I think, before leading into it, but Prepare model is an acronym that stands for Prevent, Reaffirm, Evaluate, Provide, Respond, and Examine. And that first workshop that we just talked about really focused more on the prevent and affirm parts of Prepare, and then our second workshop will dive further into the other ones, but we'll kind of explain a little bit more, and then feel free to jump in, Dave. But as you stated, what's nice about Prepare is it's a framework that's designed specifically for school settings based from school psychologists, but based on all of the research they have on crisis situations.
And it's designed by school psychologists, but it's taking into account all of the research and things that have been done through the FBI and other agencies. So it really is a broad look at school safety.
And so through all that research, then, they came up with this balanced framework that's tailored, that we can tailor to fit our own district, and it focuses both on psychological and physical, which we'll get into a little bit more too, but it kind of gives us guidelines and assessments to use to kind of figure out what we're doing well and then where we want to approve upon. But it gives us kind of just the outline, and we get to use it the way we need to. And then it aligns our really well, which is why we want to move forward with it with other initiatives we're already putting in place in our district, like we are starting some social-emotional curriculum at the middle levels. We have PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, at the elementary levels, the academies, which are the small school within the big school, our building security updates, our drills, our malice training, our trauma-informed practices. All of those things are pieces and parts that we get to assess and kind of figure out what we're doing well, and then, okay, where are the holes, and how can we improve on these, and that kind of thing.
So what makes Prepare a little bit different, and obviously because it comes from school psychologists, it balances both physical safety, like what do we do in a crisis situation to ensure people are physically safe and our buildings are physically safe, but it also takes into account that psychological piece of a crisis and kind of what happens after and during, and what kinds of things can we do to decrease the likelihood that a crisis situation will happen in the first place. So that was a nice piece of this, and part of, I think, why we thought it was a good addition to what we already had in place is to kind of look at both the physical and the psychological safety. So what do we mean by psychological safety? Because it could just be like kids' emotional status, but it's not just that. It's kind of looking at how can we develop a safer environment for our students from that psychological perspective? And so kind of promoting resiliency and school connections and connectedness, so kind of the overall school culture, as well as those mental health pieces, making sure that there are good supports for our students in those ways. And research shows that having those pieces in place also kind of helps prevent problems like substance abuse, violence, truancy, and bullying. And again, you know, like some of the other pieces that we're doing fit with that, there are a few of us that are doing Check and Connect, which is like a mentoring program to kind of help build kids' connection to school and feeling like they have a safe person to work with. So I just feel like this was really a good time to do this work. I sat in training today for the Trauma Informed Schools piece, and they talked a lot about school safety and connectedness and how that's important in the social-emotional learning and all of those pieces. So it just really seems to be a good seamless fit in a lot of other things that the district is doing at this time.
So one of the things, like with our arts programming, we talk about expanding intermurals, clubs connected to each of the academies and all this, we think of those as just being the right things to do for kids and give them a broad experience, but it also connects the kids back to the school in a really purposeful way that has school safety implications as well. It's kids that feel isolated or alone that sometimes might lead to other things that hurt our environment for learning as well. So it's kind of, it kind of opens your eyes to see that impact, those kind of, the broad program that we can offer in our district really contributes to our connectedness and school safety ultimately as well.
Which then has positive implications for learning. Kids do better when they feel better, so. I believe you guys got a copy of the vulnerability assessment. Did they?
They did, yeah.
Okay. Make us happy.
They did that for you.
Part of the Prepare framework includes a vulnerability assessment, and it's a fairly lengthy document. It's, I think, probably about six or seven pages, and it's a document that is meant to be an ongoing assessment of kind of those psychological and physical safety aspects and what we have planned and where maybe we have strengths and where we have needs. And I think that's helpful because you can't always think of every single possible scenario of, you know, what could happen. But beyond that, just talking about strengths and needs, it really breaks it down into, like, here are the possible threats that could happen. What is the likelihood that those things are going to happen here? So differentiating in Minnesota between a snowstorm that might mean that kids have to stay overnight in a building versus an earthquake. You know, an earthquake isn't as likely to happen. Could it happen? Yes, but less likely. And then also looking at the potential impact. So even if we had an earthquake in Minnesota, hopefully it wouldn't be significant. And so it really helps you prioritize where our needs are and what we need to focus on first, those things that are more likely to happen, that are more likely to be catastrophic and have significant impact and that might last a long time. They talk about natural crises like tornadoes and earthquakes, but then they also talk about human-caused crises like, you know, a school shooter, terrorism, those kinds of things. So because obviously people's response is if it's a natural thing, we don't have as much control over it, where if it's human-caused, sometimes it has more of an impact on people. So it's not only looking at, like, what's most likely to happen, but those really catastrophic things, making sure that we're prioritizing those highs so that we feel prepared and people feel safe that way. So Prepare provides us with that assessment and kind of an overall structure, and we can tweak it and add to it and kind of have it as an ongoing living document over time. But again, I think it fits really well with some of the work that we've already done in terms of looking at our buildings and whether or not they're physically safe and some of those pieces, so. And then as part of this piece, it also looks at, like, how are we going to respond to a crisis if it happens? So, you know, what do we do in terms of those psychological supports for children and families in our potential, our community if something were to happen?
And so lastly, just to kind of describe, as Dave mentioned, we're doing a district committee that has representation from every building. So each building will have a committee, and then one of the representatives from that building then will report to us, to the bigger district committee. We're just the organizers. And then we ask them to complete that vulnerability assessment, which I can run and get copies for after and hand them out, but by October 31st. So that way, and to determine who's on their building-level committees, and Prepare gives you a nice idea of, like, who they suggest to be on those committees. And then our second, that second workshop that we had mentioned is October, on October 9th intent, which is really focusing more on the psychological, mental health intervention pieces and the response pieces. So that would be more of our mental health specialists and then some admin and teacher representatives on that one. And then through all of that, once we have all of that, we'll do the identification and prioritization of those needs and along with that probability and potential impact piece, and then either connect it to plans that are already in place, because maybe one building's doing something well and another one, like, just connect them the way we need to, and then, or take action steps where we feel like we need to improve upon something.
I just want to add, and I could, the district committee also, we're having representation of each building, but we're bringing in representation of each group. We're trying to have a building admin in there, a para, teacher, food service, custodial. So we're getting the lens of different groups. If it's just all teachers in that, we might forget the aspect, safety of the kitchen or something like that. So we're bringing those people in, so we have the lens of everybody, or all the groups.
The workshop one that Mike was talking about was why we had such a wide range, because we built the building committees that came in, not committees, but groups that came in for that first. One, all like that, asked for the custodial nurse, gen ed, teacher, special ed, teacher, social worker side, like, it was a wow-rounded group, so we could get those different lenses, because they're all important parts.
So Gina, I have a question. The workshop's number two, would that, would you expect the same pool of people who attended one to attend it, or is it a different group, because the focus is different?
Different group.
Okay.
It's some of the same people, but it's really more on the mental health aspect in terms of, like, evaluating the situation and where kids are at and risk assessments and things like that.
But the people who attended the first one, you don't have to have attended the first one to attend the second one necessarily?
No. Like, there was one of the school psychologists that was on a family vacation for the first one, but she'll still participate in the second one.
But for the most part, it really is a subset of that first group.
That's right. It's a smaller, the sec-- the part two is a smaller workshop group.
Now, have you guys consulted with school resource officers on this?
They're also on our list. They were invited to the first one.
An SRO did not pay to the first one, but an SRO is on the list for the second one as well.
And I would anticipate that they'll definitely be part of the building-level committees, for sure.
I thought that's a good question.
So once we've kind of got this assessment done, you've had workshops, what's the annual or ongoing plan for Prepare for the district?
So part of it, obviously, is just ongoing training for staff. We have turnover every year and making sure everybody kind of knows what's going on, but it's also kind of really ongoing work and looking at, like, you know, anything that may have happened during the year, even as simple as a fire drill, like, what went well with it, what could be improved on. They talk a lot about doing, like, tabletop discussions, so you throw out, like, just random scenarios, maybe from the news or, you know, something just completely made up, and you present it at those tabletop discussions, and people on that committee talk about, do we have a plan to deal with this? And if not, is this something that we should maybe discuss? Or we have pieces of a plan, but, you know, maybe we feel like this needs to be shored up a little bit more. So you're kind of always constantly evaluating and also just keeping it fresh in people's minds about what are our plans and how should I be responding and what is my role? And it also, another piece that they did during workshop one is they talked a lot about, like, using the same language as our community-based resources, so the police and fire and, you know, making sure that if it's a significant thing that we would have contact with outside mental health providers that might help out, but then also kind of framing, like, what would our expectations of that look like? And using common language, like the Incident Command Center and some of those pieces that are necessarily school terms, but would allow us to kind of more seamlessly respond in a crisis situation so that we're all speaking the same language, so to speak.
And then also redoing the vulnerability assessments. That's not just a one-time thing. That's something, you know, we'll set up as a committee, are we going to do it yearly, twice a year, what we're going to do? And that right there points out a lot of what we need to work on.
And when you get the vulnerability assessment, it goes from very simple things, because one of the things they talked about is, like, what your schools look like, which thankfully we have great custodial staff that take excellent care of our buildings. But, you know, like, if you have a bunch of garbage land in your front lawn of your school, it kind of, if I want to do harm, if I see that, I think to myself, like, oh, this may be a good place to do that kind of thing, whereas if you have, you know, clean lawn and murals on the wall and welcoming messages to people, that it's less likely to invite trouble, so to speak. And so that vulnerability assessment goes from pretty significant things to really simple things, like, do you have welcoming murals on your walls?
I think combining the physical safety with the psychological is genius, and I'm so glad that you're doing this. And I know you couldn't talk about every kind of social-emotional program that's in our schools, but from just what, the little bit you mentioned, it kind of sounds a little bit like K-8, we have pretty good curriculum support for social-emotional. It doesn't sound like, the high school has the academies, but I don't think there's curriculum support there for social-emotional kinds of things.
Some of the academy, well, all of the academies, I believe, but I can't say for sure because I don't go to all their meetings, are doing some of the Six Seas work, and they choose, like, one of those areas a month, and are working on different things in homerooms and things to help support that.
And the Six Seas has curriculum support?
It's not a specific curriculum. The academies are building that within their academy. So I'm, I go to all the meetings for Arts and Communication, and we had, like, around Thanksgiving, they made placemats for people at St. Andrews and a couple of the other elder care places in town. So they choose a, yeah, a project or something to kind of, or they do little mini lessons in class, but they're building that as an academy.
You know what they also, and I think it's been floating through on our web page, is this grant that the high school has around this ACEs training, which Brenda alluded to today, that adverse channel, but it's very, right, how that often leads into more challenges. And so the whole entire high school staff today had the first three of 12 hours that they're having at that.
That's the very thing I was wondering about.
Yeah, so.
And there are some of us that are doing the check and connect, and then it's even simple little things, like, again, in the Arts and Communication Academy, last year we did a kind of standardized intervention for kids that had issues with truancy, where we called it AMP, an attendance mentor program, and we sent home letters to parents saying, you know, we've noticed that your student's struggling a little bit with their attendance, and we'd like to do an intervention to kind of help boost that. And so we had teachers in the academy paired up with a student and met with them for five to 15 minutes once a week and kind of set a goal for attendance with each student and reviewed their attendance from the previous week and whether or not they had met their goal, and they got little, you know, rewards. Sometimes it was leaving two minutes before the bell to go to lunch, so you don't end up in the stampede. And, you know, a free ice cream cone from Dairy Queen or whatever that Dairy Queen had provided to us. So, and then we really had very good response to that. It really did improve the students' attendance, which made the teachers feel good about the fact that they were taking the time to do that, and my understanding is that this year we'll be expanding that to the entire high school. So there are other things that maybe aren't a program, but that are being done to kind of address some of these things as well.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? We appreciate the update. Dave kind of wet our whistle, so to speak, when we're talking about this, and of course really nice article in the paper, but it takes a lot of effort, a lot of preparation, a lot of time on your part, and everyone else has pitched in, so we thank you because this is about as important as it gets. We hope that we never have to apply these kinds of things, but it's nice to know that we're prepared, no pun intended, you know, when the time comes to do the best we possibly can. So thank you very, very much, and please communicate that thanks to the broader committee. You're the steering committee, but the broader committee. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to the janitor's outline and Jeff, really now you can't come up?
Yeah, word book, the bottom two options.
Okay.
I'll take a look at it.
So we're going to finance update. Jeff, take your away.
I'm trying, Jeff.
All right, sir, I'll bring up the little report.
It's over. There it is. Sorry, Jeff.
That's fine. Go to the. There you are. Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to, can I give this, this report will kind of follow what we, what I was doing on a monthly basis. So I'm still looking at the prior year. It's called preliminary audit because it's not final audit. And I'll, and I'll kind of walk you through why that's the case. So just a couple of things here. We're following Minnesota statute 123B 75 through 77. So we, our public school district in Minnesota, adopt financial accounting reporting standards known as UFRS, the Uniform Financial Accounting Reporting System. We have to have an annual audit and audited statements need to be reported to the commissioner of education by November 30. And so that's for the previous year. So again, our audit right now is for the 18, 19 school year. And then audit must be conducted in compliance with generally accepted governmental auditing standards, federal single audit act and Minnesota legal compliance guide issued by state audit. So I want to talk a little bit about that. Under the, under those statutes, we're, we're under what's called a modified, modified accrual accounting. So I can't come here at, right at June 30 and say, here's where we are. And the reasons for that, so revenues and expenditures in the center part there are recorded in a manner which clearly, clearly indicates they are applicable to a specific accounting period or fund. Kind of what that means on the bottom. So as we were talking earlier in our, in our, with our finance group before the meeting, I know we'll get some special education tuition bills and so we don't have them yet. We'll have good bills from probably the intermediate districts. They'll be related to tuition for last year. So we have to book accounting and go book that back into, in the prior year. So those are probably the big things right now that we haven't, we haven't finished. I know I've got some summer school transportation bills we haven't processed yet. So those kinds of things. And then our July and August payroll, so the summer, we call it the summer pay for licensed staff. That all relates to, it's about four and a half million dollars. That all relates back to the prior year. So that all gets, those expenses get put in there. And then we'll have state aid, general education aid, we pay it to us in August and September. But that again is related to, to the prior year. So we'll know those, there's one piece of state aid that, so we basically know that state aids. Once we know what our enrollment is, we finalize that, we know what that general education aid is going to look like. We will work with the auditors on deciding what special education aid entitlement will be. And we'll, we'll book that, actually, we already have that booked, what we think it's going to be. But we won't know the actual number until probably next May. So it'll be May of, May of 20 and we'll know exactly what we, we're supposed to get, the exact entitlement for the 18, 19 school. So, so from an audit perspective, so we're going to say our entitlement is, is 9.8 million. And that's a little buck, that becomes revenue and then it's 9.81 or 9.7. And that just rolls through the following year as a plus or minus audit adjustment. So hopefully you're close, so you don't have any adjustments. I think last year we actually missed that by $30,000, maybe that was about a $9.5 million item that should be sold. So I think clearly close, but that's the big thing that's, that's out there. So again, that's why we're calling this preliminary audit. But I like to do this report at this time of year, so we know we're far enough down the road with audit preparation. We know how things are looking. I don't want the board to have to wait until audit reported in November, December, maybe it's January sometimes, to know where the districts are. So, so we put this together. It's kind of where we are. It anticipates some of those things I was talking about. So we, we are anticipating some additional special, special education bills. And I mentioned that I've got some transportation bills. All of that is kind of built in here. So you're seeing it reflected. So if you look at FY19 received year-to-date, or maybe we shouldn't call them that, booked year-to-date. So, but in the financial group, so our revenues are at, we have budgeted 98.1, we're at 97.9. So we missed by not very much, a pretty small percentage. And then going down on the expenditure side, I think our, our salaries and wages came in at 98%. So that was a, that was a good thing. We should build, if you get down to that revenue over or under expenditures, we should build about a million and a half dollars of fund balance for the, for the current year. And then that should play out and there'll be some adjustments between those, those various component funds, restricted funds. But that basically should be how things will play out. And, you know, again, I do this so the board, you get a good feel, okay, we're in, we're in good shape. Things could change by, we're talking a hundred million dollars, things could change by 100, 200, but they, but they won't change. I'll say that they won't change significantly. But as, you know, we'll play out some of those additional receivables, additional expenses that could finalize things. So auditors are set to be here the week of September 9th, I think. And probably a year, three, four days and then we'll really start to finalize that. So, but we think this is how, this is how things will play out and I wanted the board to see that. So if you don't have to wait for the audit.
And we think, we were talking to the finance committee, that the audit, actual presentation that is could be as early as late October. If not, it'll be in November.
Yeah, I would like to, yeah, I've always, I always like to get that audit done. So it could be having them here in September. I don't think we got them here till probably mid-October last year. So this is, oh, four or five weeks.
Yeah, we should have them.
September 9th, so they'll be here that week.
Well, they're here, you know, and there may be some things that, I think some things I mentioned, the fixed assets, stuff we don't like to do. That, come back and take a look at, but some of the pension distribution. So, you know, if we actually got them out of here in one week, they probably could turn a reporter on in a couple of weeks. But there will probably be a couple of, they, they do like to look, the state will put out a, another special education run. And that's usually, and sometimes that's, sometimes that's early October. They like to look at that one before they actually, okay, yeah, this is your, this is your, so that can hold us up a little bit. In any event, we'll be, we'll be earlier than I think.
Well, we appreciate that preliminary view because it gives us a flavor.
Yeah, and that's the purpose of doing it.
That's perfect. It's good news.
Yep.
Comments or questions?
It's okay. I was going to say, yeah, and board decision-making and that's outstanding. But, you know, what Jeff's doing, I think, is not universal amongst finance directors or business managers. And I'm greatly appreciative because there's a whole bunch of other kind of spin-off learning that comes out of this process. And it gives us two or three more months, you know, if you're going to make a change for the following school year. And I think, you know, one of those, you know, is around, you know, an analysis of enrollment, an analysis of the staffing model. You kind of get a chance to go back and go, all right, how did that work in actuality and can, you know, look at the real figures? Rather than getting, you know, the first thought of that in late November, well, we're getting it in, you know, here in the middle of August. So I'm greatly appreciative.
I have some peers that say, you take information to the board before your audit is finished?
Yeah.
Because I'm old and crazy. But I think I'm pretty accurate.
I was just going to say, you're pretty accurate. Crazy as a fox, I think. Other comments or questions?
That's great.
Yeah, we'll look for the final report, but thank you for the heads up.
Yep, you bet.
It's good news. Thanks, Jeff.
Very good.
All right, let's resume. Dave, you want to talk about middle school attendance area planning for 2021, 20, 20 dash 21?
Correct. So what I tried to do, you saw, you've seen this, let me back up here. This is a document that I started putting together the last time that outlined some of the criteria that were considered when we were doing this work before, which was the criteria that was used in prior time, so eight years ago or nine years ago now, that that was done. So what I, we got a lot of questions last time, what's the most important? So I added this not ranked in priority order. It really could say, there is no priority other than schools being over capacity. That's what kicks this off. Beyond that, this is all part of the soup that all these things get considered. But one is not more important than the other, other than here's the capacity, we are over it or projected to be over it. That's the top priority, otherwise we wouldn't be doing this. Okay? So I look at this whole document, even though it's not watermarked with draft, as a draft. I'm trying to lay out some kind of process here. And so I even went back and through in some dates where we have started this conversation because it, it's not a new one, right? So even back in March, we started looking at this and seeing that we might have some potential issues. In July, we did this at the board retreat. I threw in here that we even had a similar discussion at the community facilities task force, that that group almost drew the same conclusion. They could see that there was an issue there, even though that really wasn't one of our topics, that it came up because it was so evident. And then tonight, what I want to do is have you look at this and start to see, does it make some sense? Do we want to set a kind of a date for us where we really want to put this out there for a first and second reading? How do we want to, you know, I briefly talked with Ashley and Crystal about this, but what a, a public communications plan can look like and how we seek feedback. I think it's a little different situation than what we've done here in the past because usually there's been another building that comes along with this. This is different than that. And so having a whole committee or task force driven process, I don't know if that's what makes the most sense here. Or we, we make sure we're communicating, we give a chance for feedback, but we kind of just move forward with the work. So I guess I laying this out, trying to give us a place to start getting some guidance on and get personal input. I don't like if you want to add anything to that.
Well, I was going to say, you mentioned those dates earlier, including that summer board retreat. And I think we had really good conversations, but they were somewhat general in nature. So Dave is trying to, you know, start to funnel this down a track, get more specific in nature. And we purposely use the word, you know, confirm with the board, you know, is this the right track? Are we missing something? You know, too aggressive, not aggressive enough, but it's, it's to, you know, rather than having another general conversation without anything down, let kind of some critical feedback of this draft plan, if you will.
Because what, just to add to that, there are some dates where it makes sense to say, we're going to be done by this date. And talking to our tech people and our two middle school principals, when you start registering, because they do online registration, even though they share a common catalog for courses, kids log into their school and they register that way. And I understand it's kind of a cumbersome process if you're moving kids en masse to walk them across the two. So having it done before that registration process, there's some value in that. And they usually have done that in late January. They could even push it, I think, I was told in mid February. So there's that, plus there's, once we know that and we get ideas of numbers, we certainly would want to have this done, even if we were willing to take on the, the tech, the technical requirements of moving kids and just letting them register kind of generically before we do staffing, obviously we need to have this done because we need to, there's staff moves associated with this as well.
Sorry, that's, was that, what I was saying was I hate to delay staff, delay registration until mid-February. Office and staffing is not taking place till after that. By then, we're already building the budget, we're already trying to. So I guess I would look for a shorter burn and us making the final decision yet this calendar year in my mind, so that people can register in early January as, as they have in the past.
And they, they've been mid to late January.
Have they? Okay.
And so we, I'm not, maybe I have a little bit. I'm rolling it out a little bit further, but I think there's still, I think we could still not up against this and go shortly after the year. Sorry.
Do we need three months to develop answers to open issues, have public meetings, et cetera?
I, we could do it quicker than that. And I don't know what order it's going to happen in scenarios and maybe those could happen kind of parallel at the same time.
So last time we rebounded middle schools, about 10 years ago, nine years ago. And I remember we booked West Auditorium to have it because we thought there'd be a ground swell of people who had passion about middle school boundaries. And I was the one person in the audience. And this isn't rebounding kindergarten or elementary, this is middle, middle, not saying nobody cares. But I'm saying at that time, when we had been six, seven, one building and eight, nine the other, we had to divide the town. It was, okay, do what you have to do, right? So I think there's a little different, different scope of emotion involved just from 10 years ago.
I just think three months is, is a long time since it's not a wholesale entire district shift. But that's just my feedback.
Could you scroll down on the calendar?
And could we potentially have that second reading in January? For, that would be the approval, I would be assuming, of here's what it's going to be, the final decision instead of waiting until February?
So.
So that's a what, a week, two, two weeks?
So which, which would be the final date, 1/6 or 1/27? And could it be 1/6, Mike? Is that a, what you had, is it organized?
If you get to your board meeting, that's, that'd be pretty tough to.
It's a, it's a rough one to do it on.
So if we make a final decision on 27?
Probably the second reading by the 24th of February.
Well, it's the second reading.
But the 27th is even delaying registration now by two, three weeks, right? Because if they release the registration guides by mid-January and we want them to know what school they're going to before the reg guides go out, I'm feeling like this needs to be done in December. Mostly said I want to let Reggie off the hook.
Put you in registration, we're still off.
I mean, how much time would, would you need, Joe, to get that figured into the budget once it's done?
Shouldn't be overly difficult. Couple, I'm not sure, Jeff might know how long.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm not sure the question is.
I'm not sure what the budget issue is.
About this movie teachers or whatever, but it might be the same.
The delay in making a decision, how does that impact budget staffing decisions?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's a big budget implementation.
So if, if I went to the middle school, just to play this out for a second, if we said the 27th was the second reading, kind of the decision is made before that, right? You're given one last window. It's probably done at that.
That's really comfortable registering based on a first reading, I mean.
You know, so if not, I could go back and say to the middle school principals and our tech. our tech team, does this mess us up?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're assuming that, but let's find out.
Yeah.
Well, and do we have to have the two public meetings, or can there be some sort of way of electronic, you know, have one listening session, or maybe one added board meeting? It feels like we're, we're booking October, November for public meetings. Do we need that?
There should be avenues to provide feedback, not just meetings.
Yeah, I mean, could we do like a podcast, or...
Do we need two public meetings?
Well, you're trying to, you're trying to be accessible as possible, but... Go ahead.
That's what I mean, you know, try to shorten up that September through December timeline.
I think we need two meetings. We need two meetings.
Because the last time, granted, it was for elementary schools. The turnout for both meetings was very low, but after we came forward, or jobbing room came forward and said, here are the different options, or my recommendations, that's when everyone came forward and said, well, wait a minute, we didn't have enough time to voice our concerns. So, I think to err on the side of caution, we should offer two meetings.
But I think that's gonna happen no matter what. People who move, or the people who, people who are impacted are gonna come out after the fact.
Sure.
So, whether we have two sessions or four, people are gonna wait to hear what the final recommendation is, and then those impacted will...
I think if we have only one session, it just comes off as not giving people enough attention. So, I think two, just as our public face is worthwhile.
Doesn't need to be two months worth of waiting.
No, probably not.
That's what I mean, I think there's opportunity to shorten up that window between September and December 31st.
And I think you're probably right, and correct me if I'm hearing this wrong here, you know, we want to be maybe a little bit more aggressive about getting draft proposals, which means, then it's going to be more of, you know, kind of administrative efforts on the forefront, than seeking feedback, rather than task force. And then, look to lay out where that can be presented multiple times to gather meaningful feedback from the community, with the hope that we can make a final decision, if possible, prior to the end of the year. Now, we, you know, there is just one board meeting in each November, December too, so... Is that accurate, or am I missing something?
That'd be my preference.
Yeah.
Let's be for the whole board.
So, that would mean a first reading in November, a second reading in December?
If that's possible, without putting undue stress. I mean, I don't want to make, because you've still got to build the models, right?
We need to do that. Yeah, we need, and we want to go out at least twice.
Yeah.
We want to respond to that. And I, I think some of these, I think sometimes there's devil in the details, as they say, like rolling it up, like how you handle a kid who's gone to middle school east for sixth grade and seventh grade? They get it, stay there for eighth grade, even if their area is west now? And now, I'm, I'm in east for my eighth grade year, but I have a sixth grade sibling coming in that now is in the west attendance area. Some of those kind of decisions can be, those are the ones that create lots of emotions sometimes in our heart as well. And how we decide to deal with people that just have a preference and want to transfer, whether we allow that or not, we'll need to make decisions about that. And so, some of those might take a, in addition to generating scenarios, is what's our position on how we're going to handle some of these nuances of it as well?
Do we have an opportunity to have some sort of information at table, at conferences at West and East in November?
I mean, we could certainly do something like that, right? And put together some information.
Have somebody there to answer questions? Take suggestions, what, I mean, that would be a, you're not going to reach everybody, but you're gonna...
It's a choice to get more.
It's a target audience right there.
And having a variety of presentation types, I think, makes good sense. Or maybe people can't make to a specific date, but they've already figured they're coming to conferences.
Right.
So, I think...
The best opportunity to be in front of the most people.
My observation is two things, Dave, and the second one builds off the first one. You do have at the top of the screen there, 99 or 923. I'll make a request right now, let it be 923. And that's because we know we're going to be short a few board members on the 9th, and I think this topic, we want to have full representation. So, not only did you prefer it, I'm saying, let's make that the 923 meeting. My second comment then is, my second comment then is, would it be possible, and I'm, I'm hearing some consensus on the board at least, that looking for ways to shorten this, but I feel like we should throw it back in your court to say, what is your, your, the team that has to do this, preferred timeline? And you could bring that to us on the 23rd, knowing that we're kind of saying, don't delay this any more than you need to. But if your preferred timeline is, gosh, can we get this done in December? So be it. If your preferred timeline is, we're concerned about compressing this too much, thus we need to bleed it over until X, whatever X, I'd like to hear what you guys say, because you've given three different dates now.
Yeah.
I'd like you guys to come back, personally, I would like you guys to come back and say, look, we could map this out, this is what we choose, and then we could draw on that.
And I was gonna add one thing to that timeline, that even though that organizational meeting typically would be used for other things, just thinking calendar wise, that potentially could be one of those dates, and it might even be the second reading.
That's kind of where my head was, because if you, I think, as, when you come out with the first reading, you've kind of put the cards on the table. You've said, this is the preferred proposal. You now have a fairly sizable gap, people will kind of noodle on that, massage that, chew on it, whatever, and then you've got an opportunity to come back in January to actually, you know, bless or modify as you please. So, that, that seems to get you earlier, like you're talking about, but not overly compressing it. But my point was, I think if you, your team came back and said, look, not just, here's the choice dates, or choices of dates, here's what we would suggest, that would be helpful.
We can do that, and I think then I'd love Ashley and Mike obviously to help with kind of what our communication plan is.
Oh, sure.
For feedback and all of that. So, we will come with that on the 23rd.
Okay.
Okay. If, is that good?
That's good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
And so, I appreciate that, if you feel strongly about something I'm hearing, compress it earlier is better, don't mess up your other processes, we'll go through that.
I think it's don't mess up your other processes, which may mean you need to compress this, because we don't want to delay registration, staffing, it's all these things that kind of, the dominoes that have to fall.
Yeah, like have our staff know what building they're in sooner, rather than, sometimes that's unavoidable, but...
I will say, and it seems like we've gotten there, but looking at, as we've tracked and rolled it this summer through to the current date, we, we need, something's got to change.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
So, so we've got to do it.
Yep. I think everybody on that task force, everybody on, IV or wherever it is, said, what's going on, why is this so, so small, but it was west so big, it's...
It's not if anymore.
It needs to happen.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that we include fifth graders as well, so the elementary schools, there's some sort of information presented as well.
Right.
Because that's, that's the credit that they're taking.
Where are we gonna get to send these schools for the information during conferences?
Say that one more time.
Where are we gonna get to send these schools to give out the information during conferences?
Some of us, I suppose.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
I would think so.
Yes.
With a consultant.
Yeah. Those will be fun tables.
Are we, has there been any discussion yet about whether or not we will stick with feeder schools?
You know what, I put, at the top, I put other considerations, feeder schools considered, not determining...
I don't think we can, just, I don't think the math works anymore. I think we have to upset that up.
You could still have, obviously, the geography, there's going to be chunks, right?
Right.
Right.
And...
But we, we'd be moving a lot more kids at that point in time to make the math balance.
Yep. And those of you, you know what, it was actually encouraging and discouraging at the same time to hear Michael Kurski talk about the projections for SHOC. It's very exciting.
It is. And it was mostly positive, I mean, very positive.
But at the same time, all these things are out there, but he's not willing to put his stink in the ground on dates or numbers or anything, it's really complicated.
No, you tried three different times.
Yeah.
Let me ask you in a different way.
He was, he was good at not answering, but he was, he's a very knowledgeable guy.
All right, Dave, do you feel like you've got the direction that you were looking for tonight, to then come back on the 23rd with a plan, proposed plan to move forward?
Yeah, and some of these, like I said, devil in the detail things, how we handle that scenario of siblings and finishing at your school, what transportation might look like depending on our decisions that we make? Because if we decide to grandfather some people in, that changes what we need to do from a transportation perspective as well. If you...
But the good news are proximity of the two schools is pretty close.
Yeah, that's true, we could shuttle.
It's more manageable.
If, if you have strong feelings or thoughts about any of those, I, I guess, I would be interested in hearing what you thought on that. We can certainly start digging through that and leave something out there, but as a board, if you have strong feelings about it, not tonight, but at some point, that would be great as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Order followed. All right, let's move on to section eight, 8.1, Community Facilities Task Force Update. So, Facility Committee, I'll turn to you, Judy, to...
I see we have some of the information that was given to us at the meeting, and I will say that it was, I thought, really interesting information, especially from Michael Kurski. Kurski?
Kurski.
Kirsty?
Key.
Key, that's what I thought, okay. And, you know, I can see why he didn't want to be pinned down, because demographic prediction, you know, it's got some science in there, research, but, you know, it's not pure science, it's, you know, some figuring and everything. But his overall description of what we can expect as a school district was pretty impressive. One thing that he said that especially spoke to me, he said, you can expect to have a consistent number of students into the foreseeable future, and that's a good thing, it's a very good thing. Also, we have several housing additions that are coming out in the next months to a few years. He said that our district will remain a relatively young community, which isn't usually the progression of a community, but he said, because of the jobs here, that the anticipation was that remains young families with children, so... Another thing that I thought was, you know, with a couple of stars, he said, right now, places like Eden Prairie are able to sustain their bonding costs through commercial property, and he said, Shocopee is about 10 years away from that. Now, that would be great if that came true, if we had that kind of support through taxes we collected from industrial. And then Kevin McGully from UNESCO spoke. He said, because we have so many newer buildings, we're really better off than many districts are, especially outstate, but even within the metro area. However, there are many needs that have been planned for in a 10-year timeline using LTFM and district funds. And of course, a lot of that is Pearson and Central, already started some of the work on Sweeney. Something that was a little bit surprising was that Pearson, according to the information we were given, would actually take more money to meet facilities needs than Central.
It's a bigger building.
Maintenance, that was the answer. Maintenance, not overall overhaul.
Not changing the structure.
Correct. Not changing for academics, changing it for safety.
That was the, the four and five rated thing, right?
Right, right. The, yeah, the thing.
Whatever category, the, the highest urgency.
So, has the, I don't want to cut you off, I have a question.
No, that's kind of my summary.
I'm trying to remember, have you now reached the kind of the conclusion of the information download point, and you start to move to discussion and recommendations? Or is there some more?
Well, we're gonna meet.
We're two tours.
We're gonna, yeah, the tours, I think, will be essential to starting to generate a conversation.
Just one thing, I've got a question on, are we looking at adding buildings, or just finding different views?
That's not the purview of, that's not the purview of this thing.
Your purpose. But it is interesting on, on these handouts that Michael Kurski provided, if you kind of overlay the 2040 plan versus the next page, and you look at a lot of the greenfield development, or developing new development, right, as opposed to the red is more the infill or redevelopment, a lot of it's commercial, like, like you were saying, right, it's, which is good for tax, great for taxpayers. But a lot of it's in the yellow, in the residential, and there's some big chunks that, you know, hasn't, I don't think, I think part of the reason Michael was so hesitant to be pinned down, right, was he was talking about purchases that haven't been announced yet, and the availability of credit and money right now, what did he say, something like a mortgage on an apartment building was something like 3.2%? So, builder, it's, money's very easily available right now. So, I mean, we could see another boom for, right now, or it could be sustained over the next five years.
Especially because we've had an artificial opposite of boom.
Yeah.
We've had an, we've had a freeze.
Yeah.
We literally had a freeze, and so, we have not had much building, and so, that's built up a pent-up want.
And it sounds like in the next, within the next five years, there could be an upwards amount of about 600 places to live, whether it's a combination of apartments, townhomes, single family, there are just that many developments that are just exploding, like the gravel pit, sounds like that's going to be started here in the next 12 months, they're going to start putting homes in there. What was it, there?
Well, I thought it was 600 on that development home.
Well...
Was what he speculated.
Yeah, that's what he speculated.
But like the West End, they said, what was it, DR Orton said, yeah, it freezes over before that's being built, and now they can't build them fast enough, they're selling before they're built, and, and they're selling, the other part that he talked length about was the amount of money pouring into town. We're starting to get vendors who we never thought, like daycare providers who are otherwise in Excelsior, YZ, Edina, are coming here because of the profile, or, it's a different profile than that.
So, there are several indicators that this is happening, that are, we have substantial growth in the youth population.
It's a good thing.
Yours is one, I, I did not understand, is there a infant-only child center going in your...
Forty-eight bed.
And that's full, right?
Yeah.
They're trying to get approval, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that, that one's not full already, there's an application for a 48-bed infant daycare, because infant daycare, the existing facilities are full six, nine months in advance, when you don't even know you're having a child.
Right.
If you haven't signed up for daycare yet, you're not gonna get it.
Yeah, planning to have a baby based on when you can get the child in, it's like a crisis.
But the people who want to build it believe it'll be, the capacity maxed out immediately.
And you know, they researched it.
Oh, yeah?
And I thought, you know, the population, he said, is about 42,000 in Shocopee today, but they anticipate it to be well over 65,000 by 2040.
And that's just the city?
That's just the city.
So, when is, when is the subsidy coming up by my house?
We didn't focus on your neighborhood.
It's gonna get down there eventually, so...
It's a long ways away, right?
All right, we got a 10 years.
It was really interesting.
Yeah, it was very good presentation.
And 100% attendance again, so it's a, a good committee.
Good. All right. Any other comments? We'll move on. Out of 8.2, Ash, I think you want to talk to us about the survey community events.
Yes. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good evening. Good, how are you?
Good. All right, so, as you all know, this summer, Baker Tilly conducted a community survey on our school district, and to share the results of that survey, we are hosting two opportunities for the community to come out, learn about the survey, as well as have an opportunity to ask questions. The first is Tuesday, August 27th, that's this Tuesday. It will be at the high school in the thrust stage space from 4:30 to 5:30. And then, we are having a second community survey presentation event, that will be Tuesday, September 10th, at Red Oak Elementary, and that event will be from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we have sent all this information out, community... And we have sent all this information out community-wide, to staff, parents, all of our subscribers, and it's also on our website as well. So information is out there, it's available, so we're just kind of waiting to see who will show up and provide you with the information. That's it.
This was all part of the plan to roll these out, so this is no surprise.
Yes.
All right, great.
Do you want to talk about who's presenting?
Sure. Superintendent Mike Redman will be presenting the information, and I will be there as well as Dave to help answer any questions. And I know, Kristy, you plan to attend as well.
Tomorrow night.
Perfect, perfect.
I'll put it in one at Red Oak.
They should be able to, what else has been planned for? Find out in due time.
All right, any other questions? Great. A little important, having those two events, and again, share the community, share the information to the community in another format.
Absolutely.
Thanks for getting it out there.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you guys.
All right, we've already done eight point three, so we're going to move on to nine point one, and Jeff, going to come on back up, we're going to talk about financial advisor, you've got a recommendation for us?
Thank you. Yeah, we'd ask the board to accept the proposal from, from Baker Tilly for financial advisory services. So it's things like, obviously, this group was here doing the community survey, but it's continuing disclosure for our bonds, looking at things like when it's time maybe to do a refunding on, on one of our bond issues, so it's those kinds of services. I think you've got the entire proposal. The fees are market, is what you see with the other, the other firms, so, and I think it's important, since they've been here with maybe what's out in front of us in a year or two, they've been here to do the survey, probably makes sense to, to work with this group, so. I would say typically, this is done during the reorganization meeting, I might give you probably. So, again, just, we'd make that change to working with the Baker Tilly. Question?
Why are we recommending a change there? Just because we've worked with Baker Tilly for the survey, or is there something that has happened with our current?
No, no. No, not until, so we've worked with, we've worked with Ellers, have been working with them, so. I think that it, you know, they were here, Mike brought them in to, to work with the community survey. If we've got a referendum in the works a year or two down the road, they might have a leg up on gathering some of the information. So, no, and I would say there's no, I've worked with Ellers, our current financial advisor, I've worked with these guys, I've worked with Ellers, I'd say they're all reputable, all good firms. So you can see in that proposal the breadth of work they do in, beyond state, so.
So Jeff, for the benefit of anyone watching, and frankly for myself too, this is, the fees for this is, I'm asking, I'm not, I don't know the answer, are project-based, there's not a retainer fee?
Correct.
All right, so we're not committing to anything at this point, other than we're going to work with them, and if we have a project, it'll be based upon the fees, and they're, they're going rates, if you will,
Yeah.
for that individual project.
Yeah, I would say that, since I've been here working with Ellers, other than maybe some small continuing disclosure, fees are minimum.
Right. What I'm trying to confirm is we're not signing ourselves up for
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. Makes sense, yeah.
Questions? We have a recommendation from our finance director to work with this group, and I think it's reasonable to listen to that counsel. So we are being asked to take action tonight, so with that in mind, I would be looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of this proposal. Matt, Paul?
Second.
And Joe? Any additional discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, Jeff?
Okay.
And have your group, and I'm sure they'll actually notify the others as well, be a part of that process. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to nine point two, this is the second reading of policies that we had first reading at in our last meeting. Kristy?
Again, these policies that are for second reading tonight are basically just very, very minor changes, statutory type of changes within these documents. It's about all I can say about it, there isn't really anything to discuss.
You're not going to give a dramatic reading of all of them?
No, I could go through each one, tell you, but
I think we've all had time to read through them.
You could read all the changes in
Yeah, I would say all we need is the changes.
All right, I don't think we need to belabor this, so I'll look for a motion to approve, what is it, five, five policies as presented. Kristy, wanted you to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Chair?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you, and thanks on going to the policy committee, I'm sure we'll have more to come. All right, we're going to take care of some miscellaneous items before we actually have our closed session, so let's do the around the horn quickly to see if there's any other comments people have made, I'm going to start with Judy, go that way.
Okay, I was a bit ready for that. Um, so
That's why, look this way.
The basketball.
That's right.
Um, not the CFC, but the other facilities committee is whittling down the needs list, various things that are discovered in the first year of use of the building that needed a change of some sort, and going to take a look at the wants list and see if there's money, and whether or not there's money to balance how much of a need that want might be. So, that's all at that.
Okay, Joe?
We have the finance committee meeting earlier tonight, basically everything we talked about has been discussed here, all good stuff from, from Jeff, and I, again, I'd like to thank Jeff for, for everything, and it was very sad to see that he is retiring, and it's just a kind of a shock, let's just put it that way. And as school starts, you know, teachers are back and everything, students going in, just want to wish all the teachers and students good luck. I posted a shirt that somebody had said, I copied it from somewhere, about teachers make every, I may get this wrong, teachers make every other profession possible, and I, I love that as the, as the son and brother of teachers, it's true, we all have gotten part of who we are from the teachers that we had, so I just want to say good luck to everybody.
We had a policy meeting tonight, we reviewed some more policies to get us up to current
updates, or you'll be seeing some of those at our September 23 meeting. And I attended last Monday the new teacher welcome to the district breakfast, lot of energy in the room, it was very exciting to meet 60-some teacher staff members in the, in the room, so.
I remember years when we had zero, plenty of years when we had zero, wow.
Dave?
Kind of revisiting my whole, my prior role, the North Star Accountability data, well, there was a, I think Ford got the embargoed data, and today, the public release will be the 29th at noon, so Thursday, so I think they're back to being able to coincide that somewhat with the state fair, so you'll see that come up. Got talked about to a few schools today, and it was very, you know, it's an exciting time, but also, you know, everybody, I think tossed and turned a little bit last night, but exciting to have teachers back in the buildings, and our welcome center is really busy, and what they, we enroll a lot of kids, but we also know we have kids that are moving, so sometimes the net of what happened is hard to figure out, I know, so I throw out like today alone, they enrolled 21 students, but I don't, I don't know what the net of that will turn out to be between, and I think one other number, just for some perspective, between August 16th and today, so actually 11 calendar days, I mentioned this earlier, there were 101 new registrations, we're net positive on that, but I'm, I'm not even sure exactly how many that is. So they are really, really busy out there, and I think that'll continue at least through this week.
And they're coming in from all over the place.
Yeah, I mean, I was reading to these guys, it's from outside of the country, in Texas, in Illinois, and California, and Maine, we had some, so it was a lot, and our neighbors too, there was Fire Lake, Eden Prairie, and Jordan, so it's, it's all over the place, but it's a very busy time. So if you see, if you happen to be here during the day, just smile and pat friend and Connie on the
Yeah. Bob?
Dave, get it out the end, I was just going to share, they've been really busy, and they'll be busy tomorrow, and they'll be busy on Wednesday, and do that with the rest of the week, so.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
You've talked enough tonight, right?
Right.
Key?
Well, it's just busy for everybody, I think, so, thanks.
Okay, Sarah?
Two things, one is housekeeping, just so that folks are aware, this Thursday's back-to-school event, that is posted as, as a meeting, a public meeting, so if a forum of the board does appear on Thursday morning, that works. Likewise, with the two community survey presentations, those are also posted as potentially a forum of the board, so you don't need to be concerned about that either, so a little housekeeping. Also, just wanted to mention, we're, we've come up on the one-year anniversary of Gary's passing, so his legacy, Gary Anger's legacy lives on for another, into this coming school year.
Very nice. Ash?
We've been, okay, the Sabre football team has been selected to participate in the Vikings prep spotlight games, so the game will be September 20th against Eden Prairie, it's considered a home game, even though it will be at the TCO Stadium, and ticket information has already been posted online on Athletics and Activities.
Nice. Matt?
I just want to echo the welcome back to school for all students, teachers, parents, custodians, food service, everybody working in our, in our school community, it's always an energetic time of year.
Okay, Paul?
I'm going to piggyback off of something that Matt and Ashley said, you know, teachers, staff, students, let's have a good school year, let's make it productive, and I know I discussed it before the meeting, but the seventh-grade football players got invited to play exhibition games in US Bank Stadium on the 15th of September.
Cool, that's cool. That's going to be exciting, both, both games, and hopefully exciting.
So is that at halftime, Paul?
No, no, actually, the Vikings are in Green Bay that day, so they get to play, both, both of our youth teams will be playing Mankato West teams, so they'll be full games.
Oh, wow.
Wow, that'd be exciting. Hazel?
I attended Sabre Nation football event come Fridays ago, that was kind of fun, to see my little first grader run.
Bet.
So it was fun, there was a lot of people there, it was a good turnout, and a lot of football players.
I saw the pictures of it.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
And then Southwest Metro normally takes the summer off for school board meetings, but we had our first meeting last Tuesday, so we're back in session. It's a pretty lightened up, but we're back in it.
Thanks for representing. Dr. Redd?
Yeah, well, I'm always amazed at how quickly the, you know, June, July, and August seem to pass by, and I'm also amazed that, you know, I was here part-time in November and December, and now another eight months full-time, and that 10 months has, has flown by. So I'm excited too, because it's my first start of the school year here in Chappahee, so, you know, we've had kids come back for activities, we had teachers and staff back today, and the Tuesday after Labor Day, really excited about the start of this upcoming school year, which is going to be fantastic. The other thing, I've had a little bit of time to reflect, and one of those things, you know, coming from a smaller district as a superintendent, you, you get a little bit of knowledge in a lot of things, and you end up doing a lot of things, and I'm incredibly appreciative, and I, you know, I'm looking around the room here, you've got Ashley and Sarah and Keith and Jeff and Bob and Dave, and I don't think they realize how much I appreciate them, and just their level of professionalism, and our other cabinet members and folks, and I truly do, because, you know, I was the community head director in Good You, you know? I was the HR director in Good You. I was not the finance director, but I, I spent a lot of time, you know, kind of working in partnership, and we obviously didn't have an assistant superintendent, I was the communications director, and so I really do, and it's just, it's fun to watch people who are really good at what they do day in and day out, and we've got a great team here at the district office as well, and so, and sometimes they get lost in the shuffle with the start of the year, but they're doing great work, and I appreciate them tremendously.
All of them and everyone else who's made it.
So I just have one thing that I forgot to say, I wanted the high school, like these are all running together here, the pickup schedule, pitcher day, the whole thing, that was last week.
Last week.
Okay, it was last week. It, I was, first time at the high school, having a child go through that whole thing, I thought this is going to be crazy with, you know, you're allocated a time, and the freshmen all come and do their thing, but it was organized, it was you go here, and then you do this, and then you go here, I mean, it was, it was very well organized, and we were in and out of there in less than an hour, so kudos to the high school, high school staff for all their organizational skills that day, because it was very well done.
That's great. Dave, did I see you raise a finger, please?
That was me trying to talk to those two.
Something you'd care to share with the rest of us?
Tell the rest of the class.
I have one slide I need to change.
Okay, before we move to our closed session, I would get the highlights for benefit of anyone watching, a couple of things coming up, instead, I hope I'm using the right, actually one, hold on, what did I give?
Yeah.
Okay, so we know that tomorrow, I'm going to skip to tomorrow, we have a community survey presentation we heard about tonight, we have facilities committee meeting, looks like on Wednesday. Our next meeting is the 9th of September, followed by the next and the second of the two community survey presentations, and then the 23rd is when we are back for another meeting, we've got committee meetings in advance of that, so I'll just stop there. So we've got several things coming up immediately and into September. All right? So with that, in order to have a discussion that we are allowed to do in a closed session, we're actually moving, I think first time for this new board, into a closed session, I don't know if I need to read it, but I will anyway, it's pursuant Minnesota statute 13D point 03, a school board may, by majority vote in a public meeting, decide to close a meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations. So I need a motion, second, and then with by majority to move to a closed session.
Motion, second.
Okay, so Paul and Matt, a discussion on that, and again, a purpose, as stated, for discussion of strategy and labor negotiations.
Can we delay starting the closed meeting for about three to five minutes?
Yes, we can, we can take a break to do that, and it will be recorded, as required by state law, and then we'll come out of this, there will be no, just for anyone watching or anyone in the room, there will be no follow-on topics discussed, we'll come back, we will re, re, commence the meeting and then adjourn immediately, okay? So with that, we're moving on to motion to go to closed session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous, passes, so we are going to close session this time.
Yes.
All right, I will reconvene the regular business session, we're just getting out of closed session where we talk about labor negotiation strategy discussion in the board. In attendance was the full board, we also had with us director of finance Jeff Kreese and HR director Keith Gray. So with that, we will not conduct any other business, I will take a motion to close the business meeting.
So
Thank you, Judy, second, Kristy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, we are